Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. School committees and other public bodies may continue to hold remote meetings through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, under legislation enacted in July, two thousand and twenty-two. The statute, chapter one oh seven of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two, extends quorum reductions for remote meetings. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded and aired live on LCTV. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotient, and just as a herald.
We'll move on to correspondence. Turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you. We received an email note from Ms. Beatrice Stanley dated January fourth regarding school district boundaries.
Thank you very much. All right, we have a motion for approval of minutes.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, school committee meeting as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Moving on to a vote then, Zach?
Yes.
Chiana?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. All right, we are going to be turning the next portion of our meeting over to our student advise- uh, Student Advisory Council, sorry. Student Advisory Council has put together some information for us, working with Ms. Heidi Drowick, the Assistant Principal over at the high school, and you guys developed some stuff to share with us this evening. Welcome, take it away.
All right, thank you very much. So usually, I'm alone sometimes when I have to give these reports, but thankfully I have my counterpart, Rhea Sandler here, and she's gonna really run the show, run the show tonight, run our report, and I'll chime in when she needs me, but she's taking, taking the reins. Rhea?
All right, so I'm the president of our pottery club, and we recently held a pottery sale before the winter break. So we sold pottery made by the Students in Pottery Club after school, along with a bake sale, in which our members also baked goods, and this was to offset the cost for an upcoming field trip we hope to have in April probably, to a raku firing at Snow Farm Potters. In addition, we had a stroll, the Stroll for Strength, and that was right after the flag football game. They both went great. Mr. P's sport and event class ran this. It was the annual event, and the flag football game was put on by the senior class. We also had NIESK visitors, and the students served as tour guides, focus group participants. I was interviewed during lunch by one of the NIESK delegates, and it went great, had a lot of great questions and conversation. We also had our winter art show, in which the two-D, three-D, and photography classes put up works around the school, and there was an after-school show for that. Also, our stand club, which I am one of the leaders for, is holding the Zen Den right now for midterms to calm students' nerves before that. It is in one of the spaces around the auditorium, and there's gonna be a therapy dog on Friday for that. In addition, the stand club is going to DC at the end of the month for the CADCA National Coalition, in which we will be talking to state and national representatives. And we also are gonna hold a Nalaxalon campaign later in the winter to promote people getting Narcan trained, having Narcan on them at all times, and just promoting all of that. And right now, the senior class is holding auditions for the class play. We just announced the cast today. Dagan actually has one of the lead male roles, so that's great for him.
Congratulations.
We also are collecting senior dues, and we actually passed the deadline for that, but there are still some stragglers coming in, so we're reaching out to parents, trying to get those last people to get their dues in. The junior class has a Chipotle night tonight, actually, until eight o'clock, and is in the midst of planning a spring dance. And the sophomore class is planning their sophomore semi-formal, which is at Twin Hills. And then our freshman class is also planning a spring dance, so there's many dances going on for all of the classes.
Thank you, Rhea. I'm just gonna add a couple of things, and she did an amazing job. I do need to add a couple of my few things that I love to talk about, which is the Long Meadow Music Program. Since we have last spoken to you, we've had both the fall concert and the winter concert, both amazing nights, very well attended by both students, lots of staff were also there, and especially for the winter concert, we had all our college alumni, even older alumni, come back, and on the choral end, a lot of alumni came up to sing with us during Supercourse for "The Lord Bless You and Keep You," and that is personally one of my favorite songs I've ever sang at LHS, and just the tradition and the commitment by the alumni to keep coming back every year to watch the winter concert and join us is such a big thing. The music department is also, we're heading to California, thanks to you guys for approving that field trip, and we had a childcare fundraiser right before winter break for parents, if they wanted to get, you know, some Christmas shopping done, drop your kids off at LHS for a couple hours, and be able to watch, watch their young ones. It was, went awesome. I was one of the leads on that. And then finally, I get to end with athletics. Long Meadow keeps winning. I don't know how, we keep going, and I love it. One thing I would like to talk about is the boys hockey team. The boys hockey team, I've been to a lot of hockey games this season, and do not have the best record as in past years. What I'd like to talk about is their grit, their commitment, and their sportsmanship. There is an essence to sports called losing with class. These gentlemen exemplify that. After every game, win or loss, they keep their heads up, they keep driving forward to keep having a better season and keep working, and they do not take it out on their opponents with foul play. So I really like to commend, commend them for that. And then on the subject of athletics, on December thirteenth, like I spoke to you guys before, was the Empower Leadership Training for the fall and winter captains, where Empower Leadership did a couple different leadership exercises to really unders- to help us understand us as leaders and how we can best effectively perform in our roles, and as, as team members, how we can develop our teams in later seasons. And that is all the committee has to report at this time. I'd like to thank you all for giving your time to listen and understanding, and that is all we have to report at this time.
Wonderful, thank you. Lots of great events going on. Appreciate you guys coming in and talking to us about everything. Comments, questions from the rest of the committee? Chiana, go for it.
Dagan, just, thank you for recognizing, like, you're just, your spirit in just recognizing the losing with class, or just the, the character of, of athletes, student athletes, and so every time you're here, you have encouragement, you have positivity, and I just appreciate it. And Rhea, thank you for coming. Rhea, remind me again, STAND stands for what?
It stands for Students Together Against Negative Decisions, and we focus on a lot of campaigns against drug abuse, alcohol abuse, and we partner with the Close Community Coalition, which is also joining us for the CADCA National Convention. We also just focus in general on student well-being throughout the whole school.
Perfect, thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you. Mary?
I love hearing from the students. It's my favorite part of this gig that we have. And we do a lot of talking about big and serious and, you know, very global conversations, and so to hear you talking about the fun things and the engagement things that you do, it just makes this other work feel worthwhile, so thank you for coming, you did a nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you.
I was thinking back if I could. Rhea, you were on the reopening task force.
Yes, I was.
Right? And I was thinking, and you were a freshman at the time?
Yeah, I was.
Right? So as a freshman, and I'm thinking about, Rhea was a student member of our reopening task force in the summer of two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty, and, and now to hear, to see how you've grown as a student, but also to hear where we were when, going into your soft freshman year, I guess, and where we are now with the number of activities that are going on in your senior year. So it's, it's really cool to see the progression over, over four years, so.
Same here.
Yeah.
Being a part of the leadership for our class, the class of two thousand and twenty-three, since freshman year, it's been great to see how much we've grown together throughout all of that. And back then, we tried to do so much to get our class to be together because we kinda started out rough with COVID there, but it's really great to see now how far we've come together, and now that we're able to do things in person, it's really nice just to look at all that, how far we've come.
Well done.
Good for you guys. All right, we wish you well on your trips, too. Very exciting things coming up this spring. Appreciate you taking the time to come and talk to us. All right, moving on to our next item is visitor comments. Please to welcome, anyone who has a comment, please welcome to come on up. Thank you. Good evening.
Diane, you might want to slide the microphone in between.
Oh, sure.
A little closer here.
I will. Good evening, my name is Diane Porfilio. I am the co-president of SEAL, which is the Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow, and I am here this evening to read a letter from our members. So I'll get started. Dear School Committee members and Dr. O'Shea, as we commence upon a new year, Happy New Year, by the way, we find ourselves reflecting on the past couple of years of Special Education Department. There have been many changes in the Long Meadow school system, most of which have had an impact on our local children and families. We are here to represent concerns from the school community and appreciate the opportunity to present them to you tonight. Upon the resignation of Jean Fontaine, we understand there were a variety of adjustments in the schools to accommodate the administration gap. In the hopes of identifying issues and seeking potential solutions, our SEAL team on behalf of the SEAL members would like to bring to your attention the concerns that we have heard and suggestions to move forward. In two thousand and twenty, Certified Special Education Administration spanned across the preschool, all three elementary schools, Williams Middle School, the high school, and Jean Fontaine, which we had seven. By the end of two thousand and twenty-two, the numbers declined from seven to just four in the preschool, a single elementary school, the high school, and Nicole Paris-Crow. During the last two years, the amount of qualified professional support has declined, while the number of evaluations for present students and incoming students has increased. Certified Special Education leaders are trained individuals who receive training in strategic planning of the program development, enrollment forecasting, and compliance issues. They are responsible for supporting and mentoring staff and guidance in the classroom, as well as implementing IEP services in and out of our school system. These professionals are the foundation of a strong program as they recognize strengths of the system, the staff, and support to parents who often feel at a loss for their children. We recognize the Director of People's Services is currently in interim position, and there is a posting for K through eight supervisor that is currently pending. Not only are these positions temporary, but there is also concern of potential retirement in the future. We, the SEAL members, request for your consideration revisiting our previous model of one supervisor per school. Elementary school years are the most crucial for early intervention of a child's development and social emotional growth. School committee members, our children and parents need help and support. We need guidance from knowledgeable and accessible special education leaders. We need such professionals to properly mentor staff, recognize when students struggle, and provide support for any child within our system. More and more families are hiring advocates and lawyers to help navigate our education sector. They feel lost and unsupported. In closing, we ask that you reevaluate the current model and system, and to please address the lack of special education supervisors for our children and parents in the school building. These challenges have been present for some time and won't be going away. The sooner we can achieve a solution, the greater the success for the community, the schools, the parents, and most importantly, our children.
My name is Megan Downey. I'm also a co-president of SEAL. In addition to our letter, last night Diane and I were asked to come in and meet with Superintendent Dr. O'Shea, Interim Director of Special Education Nicole Paris-Crow, and School Committee Chair Nicole Schwanier, in response to our letter from SEAL. We had a very productive and collaborative discussing, discussion about the special ed departments in each elementary school from academic years prior to two thousand and twenty to the present time. Dr. O'Shea asked us to add to our letter for tonight the additional investments that have been added over this time span for resources for the general and special education programs. They include an additional school psychologist this year at the district level, an additional BCBA a couple of years ago, for a total of three, three RBTs, which is Registered Behavior Therapists, all added this year and last year, one stationed at each elementary school, the expansion of specialized programs, two at each K to eight school, related service providers, adjustment counselors, although this dates back to several years, and an extra nurse for regular and special ed support. During this meeting, it was brought to our attention that Lauren Heaton, a Certified Special Education Supervisor, was added to the Center and Williams Schools starting January third. Upon hearing this news, we are not only happy for our community, as Lauren brings a lot of experience within this district and across Center and Williams, well, Swamp, elementary schools, but also the importance of open communication that is needed between the administration and parents. In addition to more communication, Dr. O'Shea said he would be happy to attend a SEAL meeting in the near future to further discuss the changes within the Special Education Department and these additional investments I just referred to. The SEAL Board, its members, and other members of the LPS community, thank you for your time last night and tonight for listening to the concerns of many of parents in our community.
Thank you very much. So we don't typically open too much for conversation, but I did just wanna take a moment to say thank you very much for both of you for writing to us and for coming in last night. It was great to meet with both of you and to get a little bit of a broader view on some of the concerns that families have been facing. We know the last few years have been challenging for all educators in all the schools around the country, but it's been helpful to hear a little bit more specifically about some of the things that were struggles during the last few years, and hopefully the additional information is, is a step in the right direction, and we hope to keep those lines of communication open moving forward and continue working alongside you guys.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
There's a SEAL meeting tomorrow night.
There is a SEAL, I'm gonna purge that. There is a SEAL meeting tomorrow night at seven PM on, it is on Dyslexia, so I do encourage everyone to attend. The link is on our sealma.org website. You just hit the link, you go right to the Zoom meeting.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
One of these, Diane requested that this was a great idea to blast out the CLMA mailing list, and so we'll, we'll get that out to our parents, so any parents who wanna join the mailing list will have that opportunity, so that was a great suggestion.
In the past, members have only been able to sign up for the distribution list if they attended a meeting, which in the past, we've always had in-person meetings, and since we've gone virtual, there are a lot of parents who aren't on that distribution list, so please encourage anyone to send us an email at sealma@gmail.com to be added to our distribution list. And I sent Dr. O'Shea that email as well.
Yes, yeah.
Absolutely. Mary?
I know that this is not a conversation time, but could we include that in the principal updates?
Sure, yeah, great idea, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Go SEAL.
Do we have any other additional comments from guests? I think we have a few people at home, if anyone at home would like to make a comment, and otherwise in the room, come on.
I'm Dan Murphy. Good to see everybody.
We'll have you sit down by the microphone, just because otherwise, we can hear you, but folks at home might not be able to until we have you by the microphone.
That might be a blessing.
Perfect.
Hi, Doctor, how are you? My committee, first and foremost, I just wanna say thanks for all the school committee does.
Can I have you reintroduce yourself? I'm so sorry, now that you're in.
No, no problem. I'm Dan Murphy, and I just wanted to quickly reiterate the emphasis on the SEAL needs for special education. I wholeheartedly support that, and I think I speak for a lot of families, there's a lot of signatures behind that letter, to reinforce the request and the notion, so thank you to the committee, Mr. Superintendent Tom, the whole team, for your continued consideration, and I thought Diane and Megan did a great job.
They sure did.
Thank you. Thanks for all the viewers at home.
Yes, thank you for your time. Appreciate you coming in. All right, anyone else have any additional comments to make? All right, seeing none, we will move on to school committee announcements and recognitions. Anyone like to jump in? Mary?
Mary.
Good job.
My daughter's in the fifth grade at Center School, and they have a trend, a tradition of Helping Hands, where they make sandwiches, and they did that today, and their class made five hundred and seventy sandwiches to donate, and I have the name of the organization written down, I don't know if you know offhand.
I'm not sure, yeah, I forget.
I'll look it up. But anyways, she had a great time, and thank you to the community for the overwhelming support of that program.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chiana?
Yes, please, thank you, Nicole. I see Tom sitting over there, so Tom, I'm gonna quote you in just a second, so the Long Meadow Robotics Team has been working very hard for the fall semester. It's amazing, there's about thirty students ranging from ages freshman to senior, and so the fall season is usually like they're learning how to use tools, and they're coming in, and they're having experts come in, and so they're learning how to use the tools and, and kind of starting to build their strategy, getting to know each other, and, and, you know, working out the different ways that they're gonna move forward into the building season. And so Saturday, there was a kickoff here at the high school in Seminar A, Mr. Landers? Yeah, so Seminar A, and it was amazing because you had all thirty, you know, students from the team, and then there was alumni from the team who came back to kind of help mentor and inspire, and Mr. Landers said it best when he said, you know, looking around Seminar A, and it's filled with kids and with parents and with mentors and with the alumni, and if you get that many people together on a Saturday to talk about math and science, then you know it's a good thing. So keep an eye out for Long Meadow Robotics. They are not officially a sports team, Dagan, but we're gonna keep an eye on them because they are already crushing it, and the, the theme this year is charged up, they're charged up, and I hope everybody else will be charged up, too, and thank you again to Mr. Landers for, for coming and for making those comments, because it really does make a huge difference. We've got alumni that came back, I think, from WPI, from Yale, I don't know if Mr. Landers, if you remember any of the other colleges, but they're all doing robotics at their respective colleges, and this program here at, at the high school, I believe certainly helped them to get to where they, to where they are and to continue in their, you know, their science and their math journey, so go Long Meadow.
Wonderful, thank you. Mary, I'm guessing you?
I looked it up.
Yep.
It's Springfield Rescue Mission and Loaves and Fishes Soup Kitchen, so five hundred and seventy sandwiches. Sorry, I thought I had that handier than I did, so.
Wonderful, thank you for sharing. Any other announcements or recognitions? All right?
Nicole, Superintendent, so you sent out a thing today about the Center School family?
Yes.
And then I checked in, are you gonna mention that in your comments, or?
I believe Nicole was going to mention, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, wonderful. Seeing no other announcements, we will move on to business with guests, and I will turn that over to you, Dr. O'Shea, and you, Mr. Landers. I have a feeling there are some other visitors outside.
So as, as Mr. Landers assembles his team, starting last year, we had, at the invitation of the school committee, had an opportunity to bring students from each of the schools in to represent how we are living the vision of the graduate, and so we had some exciting presentations last year, and so we're back at it this year. And the vision of the graduate, of course, is a set of competencies that are helping us redefine student success in Long Meadow Public Schools, and there's, there's plenty of examples up and down the district on this, and Mr. Landers has a team of great students with him to help us understand it further, I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, everybody. Good evening, Happy New Year. So this is our, this is our roadshow to kinda show you what is going on at LHS, and specifically, as Marty said, how the VOG is and the competencies are, are living there. So lots of examples of the VOG being embedded into student experience and student life. I want to acknowledge all the work that students do in, in classrooms, you know, so many examples, writing, presenting, creating, collaborating, individual student goal setting, critical analysis, problem solving. As, as we often say, I think it says on our website, reading is thinking, writing is decision-making, and mathematics is problem-solving. So I want to acknowledge that, and that's not even mentioning all the creativity and independence and accountability and collaboration that goes into the arts and the health and wellness program as well. Having said that, we wanted to get away from kind of the traditional tonight and, and show off some students, and I particularly, I purposely chose some seniors to share their, their words and their experiences. So we have three students representing four programs or classes at LHS, and I'm gonna hand over the microphone to them, and they're gonna, they're gonna share some, some insights. But at the end, we have Daniel Shea, senior, who is gonna talk about his internship with the Springfield Police Department and his involvement with sport and event management class, which is a hands-on class. Murphy Haber, twelfth grader, who has, is in, representing our community service learning class. She has a project at Center School, specifically within kindergarten, and she'll share her experience there. And on my right, I have Jack Bellevue, senior CTEC student, representing the Health Assisting Two Program, also December CTEC Student of the Month, nice job, Jack, and they're gonna share some general experiences, insights, and if you wanna ask, answer, ask us questions afterwards, we'd be happy to answer. I'm gonna ask Danny to go, because he's, he's killing two birds with one stone.
All right, good evening, everybody. Like Mr. Landers said, my name is Danny Shea, and I'm a senior here at Long Meadow High School. I'm here to talk about the sport and event management class offered at the school. This half-year class introduces you to the inner workings and behind the scenes of putting on an event. A few weeks ago, we were given an in-depth tour of the Big E and the different protocols and jobs needed to put on such a large event. We were also given an event to put on ourselves called the Stroll for Strength. This annual event is to raise money for families who have recently lost their loved ones. My classmates and I presented our knowledge to the town, and we were in charge of every small detail of the event. The final project we have for the class is to put on a hypothetical event, and we are graded on the behind the scenes of the project that would make the event run smoothly. This class sparks creativity as we have the freedom to add anything we want to the event that we think people would enjoy. I believe that it has gotten, it is making me better at teamwork while putting on the events, as well as overall planning of an event, large or small. And then I'm here to talk about the internship program. I do my program with the forensics team of the Springfield Police Department. I began my internship in the records department, learning how to write reports and document crimes, but shortly after starting, I switched over to the forensics lab. I went in with high expectations that I would learn a lot about law enforcement, but this experience surpassed my expectations. I was welcomed immediately and began learning the first day. I was thinking I was going to be watching and just listening to their daily tasks, but I was immediately allowed to be hands-on with everything they did. I was taught and allowed to fingerprint weapons sent in for testing, analyze crime scene photos, organize evidence, and fill out reports, just to name a few. I've learned critical thinking skills, trying to connect crimes together, and I've also learned more about the law, laws, process steps, better than any class could have taught. This firsthand learning is helping me understand what department of law enforcement I would want to focus on after high school. Before this experience, I was going to just major in law enforcement and figure out the specific department later on, but now I have an early idea on what I wish to do with my career.
Thank you, Dan.
Hi, my name's Murphy Haber, I'm a senior, and I'm talking about my CSL class, which stands for Community Service Learning. So this year, my project is me and three other girls, we go to Center School, and we help out a bunch of the teachers. We started originally just in the kindergarten, but then our schedules didn't line up perfectly, so we migrated to helping the rest of the school, so we actually made a signup chart, so whatever teacher, we'll just go to their classroom that day. And so some days, we stay in the school, and we can go to room two thirty-two, or we'll do recycling, just to like help the school out. But, so CSL has helped me improve my communication skills and collaboration skills with people of younger and older ages, which I think is really cool, because obviously in going to high school, you're with kids your age all the time, and so it's just helpful to be able to learn how to communicate with all different people, and it's also helped me be more independent, because I get to leave classes sometimes, like last week, my old fourth grade teacher, actually, she let me lead a class about studying abroad, because I studied abroad myself for a year, so it was fun, and all the kids got to ask me questions, and it was really nice just to be able to talk to them. And it's taught me to be more accountable also, because we've also had some conflicts with scheduling and stuff like that, which has been an issue, but we figured it all out. I think it's really a good program that the school offers, because it increases the amount of community service students in, at Long Meadow participate in, which is important, in my opinion, and I think it brings out the good in people, because a bunch of my friends who are in the class with me are not people who I would expect to do community service outside of school, not in a mean way, but it just, like, seeing them do such nice things is so like, makes me feel so good, and I think it creates a community throughout, through our school and our district, because it connects people who normally wouldn't be in a class together or talking to each other even, and it brings them together in such a beautiful way, and yeah.
All right. Hello, everybody, I'm Jack Belvo, I'm a senior here at LHS, and I am a part of the Health Assisting Program over at Career Tech in West Springfield. Health Assisting is aimed at those who want to pursue a career in the medical field. You were taught the basic You were taught the basic anatomy and physiology of the human body, diseases and conditions that might affect the human body, and how to treat individuals with those conditions. You want a plethora of certifications, such as first aid and CPR, treatment of those who have Alzheimer's disease, feeding and nutrition, and the main certification, going for your CNA. That's the Certified Nursing Assistance Certification. They're the backbone of most long-term care facilities and assist residents, whether they are dependent or independent, with activities of daily living, IDOS. This ranges from getting them up and ready for the day, to bathing them, feeding them, and helping them use the restroom. Health Assisting has taught me empathy, because sometimes you need to kind of take a step back and really figure out where somebody's coming from. It's taught me how to be a leader, how to work with people. Sorry. Oh, yeah, respect and appreciation for the people around me. And I feel like it really is an opportunity that made me mature, because I'm put in these positions where I'm dealing with a human one-on-one that most people don't have until they're 23, 24 in college and doing clinicals and stuff. And it's great, and I've met a lot of good people and friends. I'm very fortunate to have this opportunity because it made me figure out the career that I want to pursue. In a year's time, I plan on having a full-time job as an EMT, Emergency Medical Technician. In a five years' time, I plan on being a firefighter in the Long Meadow Fire Department. And as my mother always says, "Be a good human and make good choices," and I feel as though Career Tech has brought me closer to that. And it's nice because it splits up my day, school is great. Like I said, I met a lot of great people in my program, and it's teaching me how to teach people and how to just kind of share the knowledge that I have of what I do with other people, and it's great. And CNAs, you're one-on-one with a resident, you're the most hands-on with somebody in a care team, and I just, it's an opportunity that I love and that I enjoy every moment that I have with it, and I just, I don't know. I wouldn't take it back, so that's why I like Career Tech. So, yeah.
Well said.
So I got...
Well, thank you to Danny and Murphy and Jack for sharing so much about your great programs with us. I'd love to open it up to some questions, conversations, things we're wondering about these programs. Go for it, Kevin.
Yeah, thanks. This is great. I mean, it really is. I think Mary said it's the highlight, hearing from you guys. So this is wonderful. We talk a lot about these programs, but hearing what you do is way more interesting and important. So, thank you. I guess I'm curious if you could speak to, you know, if there are students who, you know, are just starting at high school, and they're thinking that maybe they're interested in some of these things, like, how do they get involved in these things? How much work did you have to put in to make these things a reality? My guess is you had to do a decent amount of that. So if you could just share how a younger student would get involved, I think that would be really helpful for us to understand.
Well, I talked to my guidance counselor, because I did not go my freshman year. So I've been at CTEC for three years, and I really just, I talked to my guidance counselor. I'm like, "This is what I want to do." And when you're picking your classes, you have the option to pick Career Tech. So like, it'd be your exploratory, but you can pick any of the ones that you're interested in. I picked carpentry. That's what I went to CTEC for. And then, like, you do an exploratory period, and I really, I realized that healthcare is something that I really wanted to do, and I'm not interested in, well, some people are, but I'm not interested in hammering nails in the wood all day. But, yeah, it's just, so talk to your guidance counselor, kind of explain to them what you want to do, and it's their job. It's their job to kind of figure out what's best for you and what makes you comfortable. So all you really got to do is express what you want to do. So that's what I did.
Yeah, it's pretty much talking to your guidance counselor about what classes you would want to take. I learned about the internship a little later throughout the process, so I didn't start right at the beginning of senior year. I believe it's only offered to seniors, so you have your own mode of transportation to, like, your, wherever you're interning at. So I believe I had to give up, like, a half-year class that I just thought was going to be fun, but, I mean, this is a lot more interesting and a lot, going to be a lot more helpful towards college and stuff like that.
Same with CSL. You just have to tell your guidance counselor you want to take it, and it's also only for seniors.
Wonderful. Other comments? Yeah?
Yeah, I just want to say, as a mom and as a school counselor who teaches little ones about empathy and compassion, y'all got me in my feels tonight, because I know, you know, Dagan is, you know, is a role model and inspiration for my daughter, and Murphy, I know I don't know you as much as I, you know, know Dagan, but I also know you're an inspiration for her. And just the fact that y'all are talking about empathy and caring for people and helping people, thank you for that.
Any additional comments or questions?
The only thing I would share is that we are getting the internship program up and running, but the growth, I want to give Aaron Corbett some credit and acknowledgement. We had 23 students in it last year. We have 53 internships this year. To be fair, that represents 48 students. Some are going to be, like Danny is going to do, it was so successful, he's going to continue it. In some ways, we have, in some cases, those students who are replicating are doing something entirely different. But when, it's on a really impressive growth path. When you add up those students, all the students who are doing internships this year, all the students exposed to CSL, all the students who are taking sport and event management, when you throw in other hands-on activities and classes like yearbook, you're looking at over 50% of the senior class doing something like this. So I think our goal is to continue to grow this, continue, we don't want to force students into things, we want to let them, give them a choice, but we want to give them enough choices that everyone can find their niche, and that's the goal.
And as Tom has often reminded me, the spirit of finding students real-world opportunities to apply their learning, it's really happening in all classes. And I had received an email from the chair of the English Department, Mark Cormier, just before the holidays, and he was describing, the students had read Tim O'Brien's The Things They Carried, great nonfiction work on Vietnam, and the students out of that had an opportunity to write holiday letters to veterans. And it was just a great tie-in between, you know, some really hardcore academic work, reading the things they carried, but also, you know, giving the students an outlet to express their appreciation to veterans. And so, you know, it's happening in ordinary moments, but it's also happening in sort of more showcase moments that we heard about tonight. And so I'm really proud of Danny, Murphy, and Jack. I mean, it's really an illustration of how we're, as a community, and I think this truly is a community-wide thing, really trying to help us redefine student success and help us think differently about the high school experience. And it is about establishing that strong academic base, but it's also about acquiring experiences that open up doors and windows to students. So I'm really proud of what you're representing for the entire senior class in all of Long Meadow High. And kudos to Tom for, you know, finding every opportunity to support students finding these authentic learning opportunities. So, good stuff.
Very good. Thank you. So can I ask, are the internship programs a half-year? You were mentioning that it's a half-year course.
Yeah, it's usually a half-year, but you have the option to do it a full year if you, like, want to do it. I know a bunch of people that, like, they did it and they liked it, but they didn't want to continue a full year. They usually just wanted ISIS for the last half of the year. But I think this is going to help me a lot more, so I decided to continue it the full year, and I just have to talk to my guidance counselor about adding it to the schedule and making sure that the police department's, like, allowing to have me there for the second half of the year.
That's wonderful. Is that the same for the community service learning class?
It's only half-year, yeah.
Also a half-year opportunity?
Yeah.
And is there the option to extend it for the full year if that works?
I don't think there's another...
There is, on a normal basis this year. We had some other electives that were highly signed up for by students, so we're running it in the fall. Normally, we run two sections, so it's a semester, but if the student is interested and with the teacher interest in having, you did a great job, you want to continue, you can do that.
Wonderful. And thank you, Jack, for pointing out, I love what you said about the exploratory track. I think for a lot of students, when they think of CTEC, they think they need to know what it is they're going to study before they go, and that they aren't going to go if they don't already have a particular track in mind. So I appreciate you pointing out that you went with one intention and then discovered a different passion that's kind of reshaping. That's really useful, I think, for younger students to hear, that they don't have to have all those answers planned out in order to make that decision.
Yeah, I didn't even know I wanted to do anything in the medical field, so it was great.
That's wonderful. Well, thank you very much to all of you for coming by tonight. Any last words for anyone else? All right, we appreciate you taking the time to come on in. This is really the very best part. I love that we're in the part of the year now where we get to hear from our schools and see how the VOG is being enacted on a day-to-day basis.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are moving into administrative reports, and we will begin with you, Dr. O'Shea.
I always thought the very best part of the meeting was the superintendent's report, but...
Oh, it's post-seconds.
Apparently not. Yeah, you're not.
Thunder stolen by children.
No, the focus, the focus is on the students where it ought to be.
Thank you very much.
A few items. Mr. Maz and I had an opportunity to meet with Tom Andrew Lynn Simmons and Finance Director Paul Pesterzic, as we often do in preparation for the budget season, and so we exchanged our sort of emerging budget forecasts, and we'll talk a little bit later on in the meeting about the budget calendar. Middle School Project, the work is continuing in terms of completing the deliverables, as they're called, associated with the eligibility period. One of the opportunities that we have in front of us is to talk to the MSBA further about our enrollment projections. So by the end of this eligibility period, we will establish with the MSBA an official project enrollment, and it's an important part of the process because, as we establish that project enrollment, it becomes the basis for the MSBA grant, it becomes the basis for the size and scope of the project. So that is ongoing. We've had ongoing opportunities to work with our partners on the LEA on considering ways to, creative ways, to identify additional opportunities for elementary educators to find time to collaborate and prepare for classes, and so those meetings have been ongoing. We've talked about finding ways to provide grade-level release time, finding ways for teachers to meet district and school expectations, but to do it in a way that allows for some productivity, or, excuse me, some autonomy and some flexibility. And then we've also talked about what some of the PD schedule could look like for next year. I hope you're interested in, or have an opportunity at some point to read a letter that I included in your packet. It is a letter from the Connecticut Valley Superintendent's Roundtable, of which I'm a member, and the CVSR, as it's called, developed a letter to submit to Commissioner Jeff Riley of the Elementary, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And it's an articulation of the struggles that districts in the Connecticut River Valley have found in terms of providing staffing and identifying, you know, expanding the educator pipeline. We're all experiencing it, the hiring challenges, the number of vacancies, it puts a lot of stress and strain on our educators, and obviously, it affects our ability to do everything we want to do and can do for our students. So I hope that letter is of interest to you, and I think the problems associated with the educator pipeline are especially acute in Western Massachusetts, and this letter gives voice to that. And that's it. And if you have any questions on any of those, happy to answer those now or at any point.
Any questions or follow-up? Kevin?
Yeah, thanks for including that letter, Marty. I thought it was really well done.
Yeah.
I guess the question that I had, can you just remind us with the changes in the government on Beacon Hill, does that mean we have a new DESI commissioner? Or is Commissioner Riley still staying on? Like, how does that work?
Yeah, Commissioner Riley will stay on. There is a newly appointed Secretary of Education, whose name escapes me right now, but he was recently appointed, and that is a person that will work in the executive branch of the state, given the election. So I think what we will see is that with the new administration, it will probably slow down the development of the state budget, so they have some additional time as a new administration to develop the budget, which means we might find out what our Chapter 78 is, for example, later than we normally would. Other than that, I haven't sensed any sea changes or big shifts with the election of the new governor.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the follow-up is, I was curious with the appointment of the new Secretary of Education.
Yeah.
Like, is that an opportunity to invite him out here? And it just seems like, you know, everything's starting new, let's see if we can get somebody from the state out here to talk to your group and really see what's going on, because I feel like I read about him, and he's from Eastern Mass.
Yeah, I think he's from Lowell, maybe?
Yeah, but it seemed like nowhere close, and it might be useful to have a visit, if that's possible.
Yeah, I love it. I think the, you know, there is, you know, there's been so much discussion about the sort of divide between Western Mass and Eastern Mass, and it certainly affects education. And I think to invite state officials out to us here in Western Mass could be definitely valuable to us and give us an opportunity to advocate for what's unique to us here in Western Mass. So, love it, yeah.
Other questions or comments on the superintendent's report? All right, thank you. Assistant Superintendent reports? I do not see any. Nothing for now? All right. Chair reports? I don't have a ton today, other than to just say welcome back to the new year. Good to see everybody here at this meeting, good to hear all the plans for the busy spring. We are approaching the end of Semester One at the high school, so a shout-out and thank you to Storrs Library for hosting extended study hours for students during the weeks of midterms and getting that space available for them. We appreciate your collaborative spirit there. And then speaking of collaborative spirit, we are, most of us, aware that a local family recently experienced a significant loss of property from fire. Thankfully, everyone was unharmed, but there is a great need for resources and support from the community. The Center School PTO is coordinating a response, and anyone who would like to help is welcome to reach out to either the Center School PTO or the Center School front offices. They are collecting gift cards, they're collecting clothing, household items, et cetera. So keep an eye out for more details on that collection, and if anyone's able to help, then that would be wonderful. All right, moving on to Student Representative Report. Dagan, back to you.
So I don't know how I'm supposed to follow up all that, but I would like to give a shout-out to specifically Danny Shea, Jack Belvo, and Murphy. I've known them for a very long time personally, and then all the students in the internship, the CTEC program and the CSL program. They're doing a lot, they, I, my schedule's filled with just regular classes. They do so much more that I would not even know about, and they're really doing great work. I get to, when Danny comes into our English class and he's talking about, "Oh, I cleaned a gun, I examined a gun yesterday," I'm like, "That's so cool." And, you know, I've known Jack for years, and him talking about his CTEC journey from carpentry in sophomore year to now, oh, now he's going to be an EMT, and it's really great to see my friends blossom that way in an outside-the-classroom experience. And then, just to highlight, an inside-of-the-classroom experience, which also Long Meadow High School offers, is the TA program, which is really, really great. I'm a TA for the Lancer Singers class at Long Meadow High School, so formerly known as Men's Chorus, and that's just because I love choral music. It's a very big, very large passion of mine. I am not majoring in music in college, but I do get to enjoy it, and that's just some way I can give back to classes I have been in, in the music department. So all those experiences that LHS is giving all of us students is very, very important, and I'd be, I'd be taken back if this body could not find any more ways that, not even the high school, but just middle school and the elementary school can have more outside-the-classroom experiences to really develop students, be a great thing. And that is all I have to report at this time.
All right, wonderful, thank you. Moving on to other reports, LPVAC. Mary?
Yes, it feels like a very long time ago, but we had a meeting on December 14, and I have not yet shared about that. So at the meeting, Don Jarvis, who is principal of CTEC, gave a great update. As of... On October 1st, 2021, we had 479 students enrolled. And this year, on October 1st, 2022, we had 587, which is an increase of 108 students. It's the highest in the past 15 years that Mr. Jarvis has worked at CTEC. So, I thought that was very notable to mention. Also, it's really the ninth grade that has really bumped those numbers up. So, this year, we have 189 ninth graders, and last year, we had 80. Something that they're doing that I think is notable is they are beginning an online application process, so that when parents take their kids to the open house, they can actually register to go to school there onsite. They'll have support there and computers available. They're purchasing some new advanced manufacturing equipment. I know that we had some interviews for the diversity, equity, and inclusion and belonging position. I mentioned at my last update that we received a grant for $10 million for the electric buses, and that we were eligible for another grant, which we did receive, and that's for $2 million. So, it's a lot of money for buses. Another cool thing that the bus company is doing is they are starting to use an app. And I, at this point, it might be rolled out, I'll find out, we have a meeting next week, where parents can track where the bus is. So, if you've ever tried to meet a bus, a bus stop, and you're trying to, do I have five more minutes, or do I have 15 more minutes? The parents can actually look to see where the bus is, and then can gauge how many minutes they have to stand in the cold. And our next meeting is on January 18th. So, thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful. Energy and Sustainability. Kevin?
Yeah, I love following Mary's bus.
I get very excited about the buses.
So, we have a next meeting on Thursday, so I'll have an update at our next school committee meeting.
Wonderful. And SEAL, Special Education Line to Long Metal.
Yes, thank you, Nicole. So, we heard from Diane and Megan, the co-presidents of SEAL, and there is another meeting tomorrow night, January 11th, 7:00 p.m. Look at sealma.org, and that's on dyslexia. But again, also just check out sealma.org, just to get more information about the group. Thank you.
All right, wonderful. Subcommittee reports. No report from Finance Sub. Policy Sub, looks like, is ready for an update.
Yeah, happy to take that. So, you had two policies that were out for public review and input. We didn't receive any formal public comment on these. So, one is policy EFDA, the meal charging policy, and then, secondly, policy KCD, Public Gifts to the School. And there is a potential motion to consider adoption of those two new policies.
All right, I will entertain discussion and/or motions at this time. Go for it.
All right. I move on the recommendation of the Policy Subcommittee that the school committee approved and adopt the amended policies, EFDA, meal charging policy, and KCD, Public Gifts to the School as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion related to either of these policies? Seeing none, we will move to a roll-call vote. Zach?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Thank you. All right, there are no other Subcommittee Reports today, no ongoing business. And that brings us to new business, which is the FY24 Budget Calendar and Meetings. Tom, I have a sneaking suspicion that's headed to you.
Sure, I can take this. So, with the presentation of the FY24 budget, it's usually late January. We're hoping for a meeting sometime the week of January 30th. And then, we are required by law to hold a public hearing, which historically has come a week after the budget is presented to the school committee, which gives the community an opportunity to come and provide any feedback in regards to the proposed budget. And then, subsequent to that, the school committee would adopt the budget at some point thereafter. Historically, those kind of all fallen a week apart. So, again, if we have a meeting sometime the last week of January, we would need a following meeting on the week of February 6th, and then, our regular scheduled meeting the week of the 13th. We could hold the hearing on your scheduled meeting on the 14th of February, but then we would need a subsequent meeting later that week, assuming you want time to process any feedback, or if there's consideration for changes. With that idea, it might give too short of a window if there's changes that you would like to the budget before you approve it, to make those changes and get those documents back to you. So, historically, they've kind of been three weeks in a row where we've had meetings. I guess you could also consider if, depending on what's scheduled for the 24th of January, maybe just holding a meeting on the 31st with both the budget presentation and regularly-scheduled agenda items. So, but right now, the need would be for additional meetings added to the calendar.
Okay. If we did the 31st and the 7th, that would be four meetings in a row. So, I think if we think it is doable to add it, then maybe we could reschedule the 24th to the 31st, just so we don't have four weeks in a row. Does that work for everyone here? So, there would be no meeting on the 24th, and it would instead be rescheduled to the 31st, which would incorporate the budget presentation. All right, we'll make that one official. And then, do we...
Well, sorry, I was just going to...
Yeah?
That's okay, but I will also have to turn that one remotely, I think.
No worries. All right. And then, does it, do we need to be on a Tuesday, or should we poll folks and see if what works?
Does not have to be a Tuesday. We just have to publish in a, in the reminder, when that hearing will be. And I think it has to be at least a week. I think it's supposed to be two weeks prior to that meeting.
We don't need to have heard the budget first in order for that to be posted, correct?
No, correct. I have to put the information into the reminder, so...
Gotcha. Do you have a date that any time, any time the week of the 6th?
Sure.
You're ready for?
We'll make it work.
Okay.
Select one will probably be on the 6th.
Oh, good point. On the 6th, yes. Okay, so then, we're looking at the 7th, 8th, or the 9th? Do we want to stick with Tuesday? Is there any request for a different evening? Yep, Mary?
So, I'm sorry, the 24th is canceled, and we moved it to the 31st.
Correct.
And now, we're looking at the 7th?
Correct.
Okay.
Additionally.
Yes. And that would be a public hearing on the budget.
Okay.
Yes. All right, seeing no objection, why don't we say the 7th? Does that work for everyone?
Just for clarity, 6:30 or 7? Just so I know for publication.
Is there a traditional time since it's a public hearing? Does 6:30 or 7 work?
It doesn't have to be whatever you...
Let's say 6:30 then.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
And then, we'll be back on the 14th for a regular meeting.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Those are two new things. Anything else related to this that you need from us? That topic is good.
Thank you.
All right, then, we are ready to move on to executive session. We do have a recommended motion.
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A, F, and H, and Purpose 7, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to not reconvene into open session.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will move to a vote. Zach?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well.